Committee meeting. In attendance today, we have, of course, myself, Mark Conway, Chair of the Committee, representing the Fourth District, Councilman Burnett, representing the Eighth District, and Councilwoman Ramos, representing the Fourteenth District. Representing the Office of the President, I've got Preston Lewis in the background. And representing the Mayor's Office, do you have a representative from the Mayor's Office? No. All right. This afternoon, the committee will have a hearing on Bill 22-0139R, investigative hearing, human trafficking investigations and prosecutions, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Office of the State's Attorney, the Baltimore Police Department, the Baltimore City Fire Department, the Baltimore City Public School System Police, the Baltimore City Sheriff's Office, the Federal Bureau of Investigation, Homeland Security Investigations, the Maryland State Police, the Maryland United States Attorney's Office, the Maryland Department of Social Services, and the Maryland Department of Juvenile Services, the Hope Center formerly known as the Baltimore Child Abuse Center, Blue Dot, and other collaborators from the Baltimore Human Trafficking Collaborative, who provide identified victims of human trafficking with emergency interventions and support services to brief the council on the scope of the human trafficking problem in Baltimore City, current events to investigate and prosecute perpetrators of human trafficking, for the strategies that could be implemented to bring these individuals to justice, and resources that are needed to assist survivors of human trafficking. This bill was introduced on October 3, 2022, and was sponsored by Councilmember Burnett, and I'll turn it over to the sponsor to introduce the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. So this is just a continuation of hearing to continue to conduct oversight over the investigatory process. As you all are aware, I co-chair my colleague Tom Stack from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative, which is one of the largest collaboratives in Baltimore City, which has a lot of inter-agency work, which you all will hear about today, between a number of our both law enforcement, non-law enforcement, and community-based organizations that are trying to tackle this very critical problem of human trafficking in Baltimore City. So we're here about the collaborative, we're going to hear about investigations that are taking place, and the amazing work that's being done to come back there. So looking forward to a productive hearing, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. So we are going to turn over to reports, starting first with the subcommittee. And I'll turn it over actually to Kim. Is there anything you wanted to add, Kim?
Do you want me to introduce the subcommittees there?
Please do, and if they have reports that they want to add.
Sure. So we're going to start with the legislative subcommittee. Councilman Christopher Burnett and myself are the chairs, and I will send it over to Councilman Burnett to start us off.
So as of the last update, we've been working with some of our community-based partners on the issue of benefits trafficking, which is essentially taking advantage of the benefits that are afforded to older adults, people living with disabilities, people are just being taken care of. There are a lot of folks who are exploiting these individuals, whether that's taking their social security income or other benefits, or withholding that information. You see Jackie Schroeder in the back, who's been our partner and lead on this in the legislative subcommittee. And so we met with folks down in Georgia that passed the first benefits trafficking policy in the country, to learn both the scope of the policy, but also how implementation is going, things that they learned along the way. We are hopeful that either this legislative session in Annapolis, there'll be a state statute, and so we're going to be meeting with some of our partners in the Maryland General Assembly to learn more and advocate for that, or it may be something that we come to this body to try and do locally as well. But just ensuring that we have that definition in the code and have more support systems for folks in that, that are being exploited in that way. And so that's been the focus of our last few legislative updates.
Thank you, Councilman. And we want to move on to the public awareness subcommittee.
Greetings. My name is Kimberly Sauer, and I am Councilmember Burnett's Chief of Staff, Director of Policy. I am also the co-chair of the Public Awareness Subcommittee. We have several updates since our last hearing. The first and foremost is we continue to put out our community human trafficking presentations to engage our community leaders, our residents, in how to identify, how to report, and how to combat human trafficking. Our next one is on December 12 at 6:30 PM at City of Refuge Youth Center in the Brooklyn Community. You all should have flyers on your desk and in the back. This is a partnership with MONC and the Brooklyn Neighborhood Stabilization Response. Given that it's December, we will be developing a six-month strategic community engagement plan for 2024. We encourage all of you to follow us on social media. And another update that I want to give is I had the pleasure and opportunity to train a lot of our council staff within our offices. On September 7, we had a luncheon learn where we had representatives from the majority of our offices, because we know that this is an issue that occurs across Baltimore City, not in one area, not in one district. We went over what is human trafficking, what it looks like, where it happens in each of the districts that we know we have hotspots of, how to report it, how to engage your own neighborhoods and community members on combating human trafficking. And then I also provided each one of the council district offices our toolkit, which is a provider's toolkit, and it's full of resources, referral sources, as well as the Maryland Human Trafficking Task Force Law Enforcement Dictionary. So each one of the council offices received those resources, and it was a really great conversation that we had. I hope to continue more as we get new staff and make it part of our standard conversation among the council staff and my colleagues. We're also in the process of developing a youth peer-to-peer toolkit that we hope to finalize by the spring, and we're working with one of our youth interns who's in high school to develop information sheets that are effective with her peers. And we're hoping to expand that, once it's finalized, to the entire state of Maryland, as well as present at the next human trafficking conference in October of 2024. I want to lift up that National Human Trafficking Awareness Day is on Thursday, January 11. We'll be having an event in the rotunda downstairs of City Hall. It'll be in the evening. The details have not been finalized, but we'll send them out as soon as we finalize them. We're hoping to engage the Baltimore City Public School System to do a poster contest, where our youth can actually develop posters, and the prize will be to have them printed and put in a lot of the city buildings, which is really cool. So we ask you that you all wear blue on that day in solidarity. Lastly, again, this is one of Councilmember Burnett's favorite events, but the polar bear plunge is on Saturday, January 27. If you want to feel uncomfortable, please join us. It is my least favorite event, because I hate being cold, but for more information, you can reach out to Tom Stack, who will speak later, from the MONC office. Those are all the updates I have from the Public Awareness Subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. We'll move on to the Law Enforcement Subcommittee.
Good morning, afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to address this committee today. My name is John Engum, and I am the State's Attorney's Office Human Trafficking Coordinator and the co-chair of the Law Enforcement Subcommittee. I'm a retired special agent as well, and I've been a part of the Law Enforcement Subcommittee since its inception. The Law Enforcement Subcommittee is dedicated, and this is our strategic goal basically, to supporting all investigative issues involving human trafficking connected to the Baltimore City area. The group currently hosts local, state, and federal investigators, local and federal prosecutors, as well as other supporting agencies likely to identify the perpetrators of human trafficking crimes while protecting potential victims of human trafficking. Attendees share experiences, insights, and current trends in a fight against human trafficking. In the overall scheme of fighting human trafficking, a significant focus is on removing and protecting victims of human trafficking. I applaud these efforts. Providing housing, services, food in a safe or stable environment is critical to this, and these groups are true partners. Conversely, the pimps in our area, generally men, maintain a stable of four to six women, generally women, with another two to four being groomed as the next up. Should one of the workers overdose, become unproductive due to health concerns, or escape that control, this conspiracy continues on. Pimps typically only stop for two reasons. They die in a street confrontation, could be with another drug dealer or human trafficker, or they're arrested by police. That's our focus, is the source of that modern-day slavery, the pimp, from the law enforcement side, because they don't stop, if anything, they just move to another area. To make a larger impact on the reduction of human trafficking, actionable leads to police would need to improve, and I say that from other police in other areas, need to be trained, as well as our services committee in providing information that's actionable. How far do we want to go on this? Is we just introduction here, or good?
I think we want to keep it brief.
Keep going.
I think we want to keep it brief, so we can get through.
Oh, keep it brief. I'm good then. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the next update from the Medical and Blue Dot Subcommittee.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Councilmembers. My name is Debbie Holbrook, and I direct forensic nursing services for all of Baltimore City through the Mercy Medical Center. I oversee a team of 30 forensic nurses who care for victims of trauma like sexual assault, interpersonal violence, domestic legal asylum, and human trafficking, and we're fully mobile to all hospitals, prisons, assisted living centers, and so much more. Six years ago, the city assembled the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative under Councilmember Burnett and Tom Stack, and I represented medical care providers, and we heard one common theme, that agencies were only open nine to five. And at Mercy, we've been screening patients for trafficking since 2007 by putting a blue dot on the patient's chart to flag the chart for forensic consult. We rolled this concept out to the city, and Blue Dot Initiative was born, and this program has been nothing shy of brilliant in providing every type of response you can imagine, that includes food, shower, clothing, a place to sleep, all the way to medical care, safe housing and detox, even surgery, all free of charge to any victim, all guaranteed 24/7/365 in-house with a full mobile response, including during COVID. We never missed one patient during COVID. We built the, to date, we've welcomed about 600 victim patients of human trafficking, including sex, labor, familial, child, elder, and international. We are also in the forefront of addressing forced organ harvesting, which is one of the most egregious forms of trafficking. We built the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative Medical Subcommittee, which I am proud to co-chair with my friend Lieutenant Colleen Law. Where over 100 champions come together from 13 hospital systems to use Blue Dot as needed for rapid response to care and safety, and Colleen in a few minutes will show, share more of those goals. Our medical subcommittee's statement of mission is simple. It's to assure that victims of human trafficking who present as patients do not fall through the cracks of any of our medical care facilities. It's to break down the silos in medicine in harmony with each other in an effort to save lives in a very different way. Our success is measured in lives changed. We conducted a survey that showed, on average, victims of human trafficking chose at least five services through Blue Dot, and if they chose not to receive anything, 29% came back when they hit their rock bottom. We collectively designed a human trafficking page with the Victim Service Committee on the Be More Safe app for referrals and community awareness. We've shared the beauty of Blue Dot at 11 national and international conferences in the past two years, including over 50 local and webinar presentations. I'm going to be keynote speaker at the inaugural Homeland Security Human Trafficking Conference, representing Baltimore City in January, and sharing Blue Dot. And lastly, I'm so proud to announce that we went to the White House in January of 2023 to receive the Presidential Award for Combating Trafficking of Persons, and met with the entire President's Cabinet, which was a fabulous feather in Baltimore City's cap. And I'm going to pass to Colleen Law for our goals of the medical subcommittee.
Good afternoon, Councilmen and women. Nice to be here today. Thank you for having me. My name is Lieutenant Colleen Law. I'm with the Baltimore City Fire Department. I'm currently assigned to EMS training, and I have had the privilege of joining this group of folks who work to combat human trafficking here in Baltimore City. I know that we're just working on updates since we were here last, so briefly, I just want to share that we work with the medical subcommittee to do a lot of different things, but concisely, some of the goals that we have for the medical subcommittee are first and foremost to support the designated city response model for all people suspected that might be experiencing human trafficking. We connect and convene medical partners on a regular basis, whether that be bi-monthly or quarterly, and then we encourage all of our medical partners to have a response plan for suspected cases of human trafficking, that they educate all of their staff on human trafficking, not just emergency rooms, but everyone from triage to security to housekeeping, everybody involved in their organization. We need their work. And we work to provide these partners with resources to include, but not limited to training such as grand rounds, human trafficking resource kits, presentations to administration to try and get administrative buy-in and support. And then we also encourage them to share their experiences navigating and enlisting their administrative support with each other, so that we can share our successes across the silos that sometimes we operate in in the city. We discuss developing trends in areas of concern. We have these conversations, and we realize just through discussion that, wait a minute, you're seeing different things, and so we find the trends that are emerging across the field, and we want to ensure that we're not unknowingly supporting and feeding this horrible machine, so that's another update later. And finally, we coordinate and host the annual, an annual medically-centered symposium called Seeing and Serving Survivors of Human Trafficking, that is both virtual and in person, where we convene different experts, everything from social work to medical, to nurses, to assessment, law enforcement, everything that we can do to provide tools to our medical partners in and around the city and the region to just get a more regional and comprehensive response, so that we're all working together.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge Councilwoman Porter, who entered a little while ago. Before we move on to our next and final subcommittee, which is the Victim Services Subcommittee.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, press the button. Press the button on the right, and it'll turn red.
Yeah, you got it.
There we go. All right.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Councilmembers. My name is Rachel Si, Deputy Director for a local service provider called Turnaround, and I'm also the co-chair for the Victim Services Subcommittee, and I've been co-chair since inception. Want to introduce second co-chair?
My name is Sheri Jones. Good morning to the chair and members. And I work for Department of Juvenile Services. I am the ICJ Commissioner for the State of Maryland, as well as the Deputy Compac Administrator for Interstate Compac for Juveniles.
Okay, so the Victim Services Subcommittee, our mission is basically to assess the capacity of Baltimore City to provide assistance in the form of services to people that have been impacted by human trafficking. We currently have a roster that consists of 30 members, many of whom are in this room today. We meet every third Friday on a bi-monthly schedule. Currently, like a lot of meetings, we are meeting mostly virtually, and wanted to give an update since the last time that we were here at the hearing. So there are three main areas of focus for this committee that we are still in progress of, and one of the things is we recognize that sex trafficking in particular is mostly reported, and so even in sex trafficking, there are significantly more female identifications versus male and other marginalized populations. So our focus is to expand services for the underserved and marginalized populations, specifically males and transgender. If we understand really human trafficking, the vulnerabilities, we know that, you know, those populations are at risk and is trafficked as well. So one of the things that we did to focus on this area was to view a documentary called Boys Documentary, highly recommended, hard to watch, but is very important. And so from that, we just had a debrief and identified some things that were important for us to continue to do. One thing was to continue to partner with the Public Awareness Subcommittee regarding human trafficking trainings, to really spend more time, not just mentions in terms of who can be trafficked, but really highlight more attention to some of those marginalized populations and how that can occur. From this, we also believe that specialized outreach could be important and needed, so that screening specifically geared towards those populations can be developed and occur with the intent to result in more identification of those populations. But as you do that, you also have to make sure you focus on service provision. So we definitely want to focus on making sure that service provision is available and/or expanded to be inclusive and capable of serving those marginalized populations. The other area of focus for this committee is to address barriers to safe and affordable housing, which is a big issue for a lot of people, but also specifically for trafficking survivors. Our committee will be having a meeting to really highlight the conversation this month, no, next month, December 15, we'll be having a meeting to start that conversation. The last area of focus we identified was to improve services in Baltimore City. Based on a human trafficking services survey that this committee rolled out in 2022, we were able to get feedback from people with lived experience of human trafficking, loaned their opinions and voices in terms of a variety of the questions that we asked. So we've looked at the results of the survey, and based on the responses of those survivors, housing was one of the top three services that they needed to have access to. They gave a lot of feedback about where to post information for other survivors to seek out help and know about services that are available, so we'll be addressing that, as well as eliminating any barriers that might be in place impacting people from accessing services. Quickly, and then I'll see if Sheri has anything else to add. So upcoming events, besides the areas of focus mentioned, we will host in 2024 a second annual resource fair. It was a great success the first time we did it. We had over 200 members walk in to that event, but ours is unique. We just don't hand out pamphlets and things like that. We really provide direct intake and service connection on the spot. So we'll be doing that again in 2024, and as I mentioned, we'll be doing more work with the Public Awareness Group to really focus on highlighting males, marginalized populations in the various trainings that happen in the communities of Baltimore.
I have two things that I would like to add. So in February 2023, I had an opportunity to present a workshop called Entitled Males or Other Victims, and during that workshop for the National Parole and Probation Association, I highlighted the issues that we face when dealing with trafficking victims, how the risk factors, as well as the stats. And the other thing I want to add is, as the Interstate Compac Administrator for Juveniles, we have been able, and I work under the Department of Juvenile Services, we have been able to coordinate the return for male victims 12 years old that have reached Canadian border. I may have shared this before. But recently, we've also been able to coordinate the return for Baltimore City young lady as young as 10 years old. So we are the only legal mechanism for returning a runaway. And so I just wanted to add that our males have been identified in spite of only girls, the majority of victims are girls, but we have been able to service males as well.
Awesome. Thank you. We're going to turn over to agency reports, starting first with the Police Department.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Council. Colonel Brown, Chief of Detectives, Baltimore Police Department. We all can agree that human trafficking is a grave violation of basic human rights that demands our collective attention and collaborative efforts to root out. BPD and our Human Trafficking Unit recognize the urgency, sensitivity, and vulnerability of those who are victimized. It is our duty to champion this cause and work diligently to end human trafficking, and I believe the continued efforts and improvements of our Human Trafficking Unit, allied agencies, other law enforcement partners in this body help to foster a community dedicated to working together to address this issue. And just very briefly, I do have some agency updates. If many does not know, our Human Trafficking Unit is comprised of one sergeant, five detectives, and one advocate. We collaborate with Human Services and FBI, that's two of our federal partners, to help leverage our resources to better our investigations. We also have met with the U.S. State's Attorney's Office and State's Attorney's Office, who helps us collaborate to gain advice on, you know, cases and how we can prepare them for the possibility of going to the federal level. Also, our advocate as well of our detectives attends community meetings and meet with the community, you know, to hear their concerns, and also share the resources that we have that can help, you know, with those issues and concerns as well. I know one of our questions that we received was, what is our policy and our procedure? And I think that came up maybe in our monthly meeting as well, on how do we, you know, identify some victims, maybe because patrol may have received those reports and not necessarily the unit itself. So all of our detectives, I mean, all of our officers are trained in the academy from when they first come in, in how to recognize some of the signs of what human trafficking may look like, because all victims are not always at a point of willingness, or even in a situation that they can disclose they are being trafficked. So we use that, and then we have on-call detectives that is working, or supervisors, that if patrol, maybe now because they do have an incident and they are recognizing some signs, that they can call to Human Trafficking Unit and say, these are the things that I'm seeing, I do have this victim, walk me through what I should do, what's the next step, and should I elevate it automatically to you, or how should I handle it? Because we do know some of those situations are a little volatile, and the last thing we want to do is compromise a victim's safety when those things are happening. We also review reports, anything that's titled "human trafficking," which not necessarily all do, because some of those identifications may not be recognized early on, but we still look at all other classified reports that have some sex-related context to it, so that if it is something that needs to arise, not even just to human trafficking, but also to our Sex Offense Unit, and even in some instances, our Child Abuse Unit, because they do also investigate some sex offenses, that they also pick that up almost immediately, and then the detectives can do their review, and they automatically open investigations from there. And of course, if we have any threats to our victims, it's an immediate response, like not to wait, but how do we get to that victim very quickly to, of course, secure their safety? Our continued education is through our in-service, so even through our in-service, we're still addressing that, you know, because the, I think the more that we can educate ourselves, and definitely, you know, our officers who are first responders, to recognize what human trafficking looks like, then I think that we can, of course, it benefits us more to be more educated than not. And human trafficking is starting to, the unit is starting to now visit roll calls, because I think it's important to continue that educational piece, just because, you know, the refresher needs to be consistent. And even in some of our districts where we do know that we have some other concerns with us, where we see some of that community who is very visible, we, is a way for those officers to engage differently, to make sure that, hey, listen, we understand what that means, what this may looks like. We may get a complaint from community that says this is a nuanced issue in a different way, but it also gives us a different perspective of how we look at it, to make sure that we're doing our due diligence to identify any victims that we may have that just may not be at that point yet for some of that disclosure. And then stats, I have some stats for you, if you want them in comparison. So for 2023, for our open cases, right now, we have two adult cases and five child victim cases, in comparison to three last year. Now, this is for total last year, and then one for 2022 for child victim for last year as well. Now, they also may not be at full level of trafficking, but those investigations just continue, they, you know, continue only because we want to keep looking at it, because on face, it may give us something, or it may be some of those identification markers that we're looking at to say, hey, is this really a human trafficking incident? But of course, it also takes the victims to give us full disclosure, to be able to tell us that's what it is. Total charged cases for 2023 is six, in comparison to 10 for 2022. Total closed cases is nine for 2023, and 24 for 2022. We have zero cases for 22 and 23 that has been declined for prosecution from the State's Attorney's Office. We have one case for 2022 that has been reduced or modified, original, I think, once we looked into the into the investigation, we believe the original allegation was human trafficking, but once we got into some of the investigation, it didn't rise to that level, and we have zero for this year. But we constantly meet with the State's Attorney's Office and the U.S. State's Attorney's Office. They are involved almost from the very beginning, at the very beginning for these cases, so that we're always on the same page, same step for those investigations. And currently, we have seven joint cases with law enforcement, which those also include our federal partners, those same seven cases. And then I think one of our questions was for human trafficking victims, how do we, what's the total number that's identified? So that's, that question is really complex. I think that sometimes the allegation is, hey, we have human trafficking that is occurring, and once we do, you know, I think the main part is the investigation is making the connection to the victim. Once we get to the victim, of course, building their trust, letting them know that we're here to help and provide resource, and definitely do our due diligence when it comes to investigative piece, and certainly to try to get to the level of prosecution, it is, it sometimes takes some time, and some of that disclosure may take a little bit more time for them to really trust us, and if you can imagine the trauma and the victimization that comes along with that. So that question is really complex in being able to identify, but I will say, we are working to build a matrix, like even if it becomes in the beginning that we're looking at it, that it, the investigation came to us with an allegation of human trafficking, but even if it has now, the investigation has worked itself out in a way that that's not what it is, that we still can have a comparison some way. So we do have to do a better job in really tracking that data. And then, of course, every victim that we encounter, we always make sure that we're offering services. Sometimes it takes, you know, just a little bit more, I think, as our partners have already said, to get them to accept services, but that's always the very first step that we try to take from any onset of any investigation that we have, or any incident when it's involving anyone who is making an allegation of any sexual abuse.
Thank you. We're going to move on to City School Police.
Good afternoon, Major Coleman. I can tell you that all Baltimore City School Police Officers have had training in identifying victims of sex offenses as far as human trafficking. One of the things that we do, we refer to cases to Baltimore City. Sergeant Kincaid works closely with us if we have a case that we have potential victim of human trafficking. I can tell you, Mr. Stack has conducted training for all of the officers, so all of them are aware of how it looks and what to look for. And we're in the process of establishing a MOU with Baltimore City, so I can sign a detective to work closely with the city police.
All right, thank you. Next, we have the Baltimore City State's Attorney's Office.
Good afternoon, Chair, Council members, colleagues, and friends. My name is Jesse Halverson. I'm the Division Chief of the Special Victims Unit in the State's Attorney's Office. I sort of organized my remarks as a continuation of the hearing that we started in February. I do want to say that in the eight or nine months since then, our office has engaged in a full retooling of our approach to human trafficking. When I came before you all in February, we had one felony prosecutor who was assigned to this work, and they reported directly to the Division Chief at that time. Now, we have within our Special Victims Unit, where there are many, many attorneys, we have a team captain who is dedicated to that. She works closely with Sergeant Kincaid and their people in the Baltimore City Police Department to get search warrants for electronic surveillance and Instagram accounts and all those things, in pursuit of doing a fulsome investigation of allegations of businesses of prostitution or trafficking and other trafficking. Under that team captain, we have four felony prosecutors who work on human trafficking, and as of today, we have two, one or two misdemeanor prosecutors also engaged in that. And when I say we're doing this work, it's on top of the, all their other cases, which have to do with either sexual assault, domestic violence, or child abuse, but it is really a good fit for this work to be embedded in our unit, because there really is a continuity, and as I think we heard from other witnesses already, cases present sometimes with a suggestion of trafficking, but there's definitely either adult or child sex abuse or sexual assault, there can be other coercive or abusive behaviors that may not rise to the level of a chargeable trafficking charge, and so far in 2023, we have not initiated any charges of human trafficking. But we have two, I put in my memo for this, that there are three felony cases that we are working with the Police Department very closely on, and hopefully, we'll get them in front of the grand jury and indicted at least one of them before the end of the year. You know, these cases, you want to be methodical if you bring them, obviously, you want to win them and get justice for the victims, so we are very detail-oriented. But I would say, it's my experience, that we work very closely with the Police Department, and there is not a lot of air between us and our approach in terms of thoroughness, and in terms of how we treat the victims in these cases, and really only take from them what they're willing to give us now, and that's part of this whole trauma-informed approach that our unit follows in all its cases, and human trafficking would be part of that. I would just say, to continue on that, we are lucky to have social workers in our office that work with our victims, both in homicides and in our Special Victims Unit. Two of those have been trained in the FIT child examination process, which is a certified interviewing process that Center for Hope puts on. They gave us a discount for the training, which we appreciate it, but it does also include a module on human trafficking. We have sent two people to the March Seminar in Human Trafficking in Ocean City, and we have a bunch of folks who have signed up for the training, upcoming one in this coming March of 2024. We also, since the last meeting, I think most people recognize me as being the face of this for our office, but many other people have joined me at both the Human Trafficking Collaborative, the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative, and we have found especially helpful the Law Enforcement Subcommittee. I attend, and I almost always bring one or two other assistant State's Attorneys that are interested in learning about it, and they benefit greatly from the wisdom and energy in that room of usually 30 or 40 professionals who are engaged in this regionally. I just want to make sure I'm answering the questions. In terms of, yes, I guess what I would say is, in terms of, in our office as well, we're lucky to have John Ingham embedded in our office. You know, he serves many roles for one person, but one of the things he does for us is, within the juvenile division, help train the juvenile attorneys how to identify victims, people who are in the juvenile system, either as defendants or victims, or witnesses, or family members, that they might be victims of human trafficking, and help those folks get identified and help if needed, and he has conducted other trainings within our office. We also have two alumni from our office that now work for the U.S. Attorney's Office Civil Rights Division in the Criminal Section, doing human trafficking work, and they came and did a training for our unit, and actually helped us set up what I would consider sort of the protocol for how we're going to charge cases, including the larger felony case that we're working with the Baltimore City Police Department on right now. I think we're fully engaged with our regional navigators, that'd be Turnaround and Center for Hope. I think we are open to communications from them and refer people to them when needed. It has been our experience that by the time we get a case to review or victims, that they have already been offered services, and will report to us they've either already accepted or rejected those services for the most part. But we did refer, I, there was a case, I know, where we referred a group of people to Turnaround for services, and I believe they accepted those services. And then, in terms of, one of the questions was, how do we identify them through all victims of human trafficking throughout all our divisions and departments? The Special Victims Unit is vertically integrated, so we see about 10,000 domestic violence and child abuse cases a year through our District Court at North Avenue, and that's, you know, mainly domestic violence and child abuse. But all those folks are trained in identifying human trafficking, and we do have either a caseworker or a social worker down there to assist in that work. And then everybody in our Special Victims Unit has also been advised about how to identify that and who within our unit can follow up. We have put on trainings for people as the office has been rebuilt, so that people in other units can identify it. Our primary recommendation at this point is if they see anything that looks like it might be human trafficking, to contact our unit. I would be copied on those communications, and then we would review it, because we have discussed, we would rather over-include than under-include, so rather than have somebody on a busy District Court docket, or general felony docket, or gun violence docket, try to do the sort of soft-touch, soft interview that they are maybe not trained in, to refer it to us at the appropriate time, and then we can take a deeper look. We do think that in-service training for our office is an area where we can improve, and we are trying to dedicate resources for that, so that everybody in our office can answer the question, have you been trained in identifying human trafficking, that they would be, I think now they would give a yes, but hopefully, they would give a more confident yes if we did a little more training on it. So as I've said, we have cases that are probably getting ready to go, we have not, in terms of the A-through-G list of questions. We haven't initiated any cases in 2023, and we haven't pled out any cases yet in 2023. In terms of pending prosecutions, what I would say is, we have three felony cases that are being investigated, and in my opinion, are likely to be charged before the end of the year. I'm not aware of any cases that have been declined by us for prosecution when presented, and I'm not aware of a case where a charge was originally charged as human trafficking and reduced in 2023. In general, the decision to refer, referring to letter number F as in Frank, the decision to refer cases to a federal agency is usually made before charging, and even before we're sort of the lead in the case. There was a case where there was a family member who had engaged in child pornography and child sex abuse. The child pornography, the federal agency was brought in, they decided to go forward on that, but we kept the child sex abuse case. It's not human trafficking per se, it's sort of human trafficking adjacent, but we do have more of those cases right now than we would, and I know some agencies and some folks count those as a kind of trafficking. We don't, because unless there's that extra element of benefit there, in the family situation, you often don't have that. In any case, but that would be an example of a case where the feds took part and we kept part. With Mr. Ingham's help, we did find two cases in 2023 that referred. One had to do with a Baltimore City employee who went to the Dominican Republic for surgery a couple of years ago, and was reported as having died from the surgery, but there was subsequent evidence that they may be alive and may have been trafficked, so that was referred to a federal agency and then an international agency, because it's well beyond our scope. And in the third quarter of 2023, there was a case where a divorce over affairs with women from a certain Asian country led to a deeper investigation, where the husband owns businesses here, but spends a lot of his time in this other Asian country, so that was also referred out as being possible human trafficking, but one that our city agency couldn't go forward on. Again, the question for G, which is, do our victim advocates refer our victims to other agencies? We're not tracking that data, working on that. Our agency is getting ready for MDAC, which you may have heard from like the City Solicitor's Office, it's going to be a big deal. We are the last county in the state of Maryland that only does paper filing, so our courts and also our office then are going to have to switch to this computer-based system, so it's not the best time to update our other sort of case management software, so we're trying to integrate all of that. But in the reboot, I have asked that there be searchable fields, so that we can keep track of this data. And then, as I said before, that I'm aware of personally, we referred six people for services. You know, and I guess I would just conclude by saying that we are really, really committed to this work, from the elected State's Attorney, to the deputies, to me, to everybody. I think we're very victim-focused in our office, and, you know, would just like to be good partners in this fight against human trafficking.
Awesome, thank you. We have a couple more. Before we hop into questions, we have next up the Fire Department, and I understand you guys have a brief slideshow.
Good afternoon, excuse me, good afternoon, Lieutenant Conley Law, Baltimore City Fire Department. Councilman, thank you for your time today. I just want to provide an update on what we have done as a fire department since our last hearing on, was it February 1st, I believe, the last time we convened? Just giving you some overviews of the things that we've been able to do. So we're going to focus on areas. First off, I'd like to thank my chain of command, Chief Wallace, Assistant Chief Matts, Deputy Chief Tim Collin, and the others in my chain of command have been extremely supportive and encouraging me to pursue this work, as if not a designated thing. This is something that we've decided that was important to our department, and we wanted to do so. There's been, there's the passion commitment to do this, and the Fire Department has really bought into this. So we're going to look at training, resources, policy development, collaboration and leadership, results that we found, and then what we have scheduled going forward. So some of the training that we've done this year, the big one is that we've reached the Office of the Fire Marshal, and they have jurisdiction in places that a lot of other resources and agencies cannot get into based on occupancy and inspection. I know that there are folks in there that work closely with the Police Department on tasks for, task forces, but then there's also people who work with other agencies and non-government organizations too, and we'll get to some of those specifics in a minute or two, but there's a lot of collaboration, and there's a lot of uniqueness in the Fire Marshal's Office, one that I would have never thought of when we first started doing this. I created, with some money from the VOCA grant, we have a human trafficking resource kit, so it's a reminder for all of our units in the field, for if you think you have someone who might be the victim of trafficking, based on what they complain, what they say, how old they are, where they are, what they're interested in, what we can do with them. So we have everything from resources, Kim Sowers, the resource guide is in here, red flags of trafficking, our departmental policy, even the aluminum foil to cut off the cell phone service to keep the responders and the medical providers safe. We wrap the cell phones in aluminum foil, so that cuts the signal and keeps everyone safe. And then we also have in here hand sanitizer and lip balm with the number for the National Human Trafficking Hotline number on it, so that when people oftentimes are not ready to accept services, we show them that it's not about us, it's about them, and when and if they're ready for services, they can call that number, or that 911's a safe number for them to call back. So I have distributed all those kits to all of our EMS units, the ambulances, whether it be paramedic units or EMT units, and a number of the suppression, the fire trucks and fire engines, and we'll continue to get those out, but when I did those, I did that in person, and we provided refresher training, just reminding people, and it also sparked some conversation with hospital staff, and other than Deb Facility, because they all know what's going on, but sometimes some of the other facilities don't know what's going on, and so we had some good conversation at Union Memorial, and we delivered a kit to Bayview, and so it just sparks more conversation, and it encourages people to be involved and interested in this fight. Our human trafficking recognition training is a staple of all of our incoming recruit classes, and we've also provided the training for Baltimore County Fire Department. They've asked us to come in and do that training, so we're tagging on top of the training we did for BWI's Fire Department last year, so that now we're getting more of this regional approach, and the fire service in the region is buying in, and I was invited to the Mid-Atlantic Life Safety Conference, I think is what it was called, this past September in Laurel, and that was a regional conference also speaking on that, so a lot of jurisdictions from the region. And then finally, we continue to provide training at Camp Spark. We flipped the perspective, not just identifying victims, but we, Camp Spark, if you don't know, is a camp that's designed to increase female application to the Fire Department. It's open to all young adults, but we encourage, we focus on the females to try to get our female enrollment up, and so we turn it around to them to say, hey, this is what it might look like if someone is trying to groom you and approach you to be trafficked, and so it's an opportunity to provide them with education and awareness, so we do that every summer as well. The other new resources that we have are those kits that I just pointed out, and then we've also have been working with And then we've also have been working with Jackie Schrader from Kana, who handles a lot of the elder abuse issues in the city. And we were trying to tease out the difference of where there is overlap and where there's differences, there are differences between elder abuse and elder trafficking. And so we started working on literally the wording, like what can you ask to discern whether it is abuse or trafficking? And then where do we go and when do we end up at Deb's shop and how do we, again, like Sherry spoke about, I think it was some other people, how we're not letting people fall through the cracks. And so we make sure we want to identify all persons that could potentially be trafficked. The other collaboration that we have going on, again, I'm working with a person, one of the personnel in the Fire Marshal's Office who is very passionate about vulnerable adult and unlicensed assisted living facilities. And again, she is also working closely with Jackie with Kana and our other resources, but we have drafted a new operations memo that is, you know, through the, in the atmosphere of the administration, trying to see if we can get that approved to specifically, we worked in coordination with Deb to make sure that we know what cases can or should go to Mercy, but what doesn't need to go to Mercy so we don't overwhelm our resources. But how do we handle that and where do we do it? Just a couple of weeks ago, Jackie convened, Jackie Schrader convened a meeting to talk about partners who handle elder abuse and where does that fall with, again, the trafficking and the abuse? And we had folks from Adult Protective Services and the Ombudsman's Office. And then we were working with the Fire Marshal's perspective of who has jurisdiction, how do we do it and what are the challenges that we face and limits for investigations? And how can we capitalize on the options available to each of the agencies involved? And how do we make the best policy possible with that? We've had two cases in the past maybe six weeks where we have collaborated with Homeland Security. One was where we identified a repeat patient that we had had previously and it was a great catch. It was a result of, we had done training, I've trained all of our fire dispatchers on trafficking. And so our dispatcher saw some notes in the call takers report. The captain called me up, I immediately notified Sergeant Kincaid, he sent officers to investigate. I actually was working on handing out the kits that night, so I headed over to Mercy and talked to the team, the crew that had the patient, come to find out, I recognized the name from an earlier case. And it was just an example of how, when you have the same people touching the cases and you have good awareness, you can have the follow-through and somebody is seen and things like that. So it was a very busy night at Deb's shop that night, but it was good to connect. And then finally, the other collaboration that we have, again, what we mentioned in the medical subcommittee, is that we're planning the Seeing and Serving Survivors of Human Trafficking Symposium, which will be in April of 2024. And this year, we've branched out and we've even had some of our hospital partners try to come in and help us plan that. So we met maybe two or three weeks ago to talk about how do we make this the most appealing to our medical partners? What do we do in format, content, all the things? And then kind of just dividing up some roles and responsibility. So we have that in the hopper as well. Our results so far is that, because we, again, since the last thing, we finished up fiscal year '23, we had 23 cases in '23 and so far, we've had 13 cases in '24 that, again, potential trafficking that we referred over or, you know, identified whether they were transported or not. And we definitely find that the more we do the training, the referrals go up, when it's on their mind, when it's important. So it just reinforces that we need to keep training on a regular basis and we need to keep that going. Finally, again, to just the things that we have that we have on the hopper here, that we're going to work on that really that elder abuse kind of, what Councilmember Burnett discussed earlier with the legislation, but we have a state bill, I believe, that's 665, I think is the night number, that talks about immediate prosecution of if we find an unlicensed assisted living and there is neglect, we can do an immediate shutdown. And I honestly don't think that there's enough awareness on that, so that's on my agenda for training. And so just to communicate that, not only with Fire Marshal, but with our folks. And then to continue the work with Jackie Schroeder with Elder Abuse Case Flow and the Unified and Coordinated Response. And then finally, for our next refresher, we are getting ready to update the curriculum that will be in place for the next two years. And so some of the things that are on that agenda will be to remind people what human, what is required to be human trafficking, highlighting the forced fraud and coercion. We know that oftentimes they, something doesn't feel right and it may not be trafficking, kind of talking with Jesse and Colonel said earlier about some of the cases that are identified that maybe don't rise to actual human trafficking, but we usually find that something is going on. And actually giving them the words to use if we suspect something isn't right. And also, we have talked a lot with John Ingham, talking about actionable items for law enforcement so that it's not just, she said, she said it's what can we notice that aside from not even involving the patient, when we say we have actionable items, we can have information on a perpetrator, on a scene, clothing, anything like that, anything that we can do to support our partners has been great. Elder trafficking, we're going to get into, also some industry-specific flags, things like transportation industry, hospitality. Also talking about labor trafficking, we'll try and figure out how to way to work in the male piece. I don't know if we have FaceTime for the whole video, but we're going to figure out how to do that. And I think that is it. So that's what we have been doing and where we plan to go. And if anybody needs me, that's my contact information. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. We're going to move on to the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement and the Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the council. My name is Thomas Stack, I'm the Anti-Human Trafficking and Sexual Assault Response Manager for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, also known as MONC. MONC continues to be a leader in the city for anti-trafficking work that is happening here. We've provided a number of trainings and presentations. One highlighted was, I did a presentation with retired Judge Waxman for all the district court judges in the city of Baltimore through Judge Hanger, who's the administrative judge. And Colonel Brown, you'll be happy to know that I met with Major Loeffler yesterday and we will be doing a hour and a half, probably I'm pushing for two-hour in-service training on human trafficking for all the BPD, not only to refresh their memory of what trafficking is, what it looks like, how to identify it, but also what to do with it when they have it. Because that's, it was really important, that's why we have our Blue Dot program, that's why it was developed. So we do have an answer for what to do with, when a first responder has that. So there will be an in-depth review of the Blue Dot. I also attend roll call trainings with Sergeant Kincaid. We've done the Southwest District, the Northwest District and the Southeast and hope to go to the Southern soon. MONC also co-hosts the Maryland Human Trafficking Investigator Seminar, which is in March, also the Maryland Human Trafficking Professionals Seminar, which is in October. These are two large conferences that are held in Ocean City. We have other cosponsors as well. These are nationally-known human trafficking training seminars for both professionals and law enforcement. MONC also hosted our first-ever Victim Services Conference at the Reginal Lewis Museum back the 1st of November, which was highly attended and we had a block on human trafficking and sexual assault response. One of the proudest things that MONC is, is most proud of is our human trafficking grant program. This year, we gave out $325,000. We're in the process of going through the contracts right now. Everyone's been selected and this program, over the years, has given out over a million dollars to grassroots organizations here in the city that are doing the work on the street. They're boots on the ground, they're going out and they're making a huge difference. And so I thank all those agencies for doing the hard work. And also want to thank Mayor Scott for continuing to support the human trafficking grant program. MONC also has, we've also been doing some coordinated responses. We're doing one in Brooklyn where I've actually coordinated our friends at Turnaround and our friends at the City Refuge Baltimore to go out and do street outreach, to increase the number of people that we have that can go out and safely do street outreach to the sex workers in those areas. We also recently met with the community associations in Morale Park to, and we're going to be activating a coordinated neighborhood response there as well. The Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative, which I co-chair with Councilmember Burnett, is going strong. I, well, not before I came here, six years ago, I worked at the Governor's Office and I came to a meeting here in the city where my predecessor, who was not really the human trafficking coordinator, but was doing many hats, was trying to get a task force up and running. And I sat in a meeting with a handful of people. And when I walked out of the meeting, one of my friends who was at the meeting, who is a law enforcement officer, I'm not going to identify him, looked at me and said, this is a failure. This will never happen. This city is too disorganized, it's too, it is not going to happen. This is a waste of time. About three months later, I took the job here and I started working with Councilmember Burnett and six years later, the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative is the strongest, strongest anti-trafficking task force in the state of Maryland. I put my words to that. We have 60-plus stakeholders. And I sat in a meeting yesterday that John Ingham ran, our Law Enforcement Subcommittee, and I was a couple of minutes late coming, getting there. And I walked into a room with 30-plus professionals working together in a collaborative effort, law enforcement and, you know, and law enforcement agencies, federal, state. We had folks from Customs and Border Protection and the DOCS and State Police and, you know, just to see everybody working together. We had our Victim Services folks there yesterday. It was, it was just amazing to see the collaboration because that's what it's all about. The name, the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative, was chosen, the word collaborative was chosen, we could have called it the Task Force, but we called it the Collaboration because that's what it truly is. Because if we're not working together, we will fail. But we work together and we're succeeding, which is excellent. And I just want to tell one quick success story. Two weeks ago, our executive assistant got a phone message from a counselor at a high school in Baltimore County and they forwarded it to me. And I immediately picked it up, I listened to it, I called that counselor and there was a minor from that high school, had not come to school in quite some time. And the word was that she was in the city and suspected being sex trafficked. I immediately got the information from that about the kid. I contacted Sergeant Kincaid, who was at a school function with his daughter, and he immediately dropped what he was doing, sent a text message to one of his detectives. They worked together with the state police, the Baltimore County Police. Within an hour or two, they located the kid, found the kid was okay. We contacted the school, let the school know that their kid was okay and the kid will be coming back to school in a short period of time, in a day or two. They were amazed at how fast the city worked, how fast that we worked in a collaborative effort with not only the city police, but our partners in Baltimore County and the state police. That's true, that's successful. And tomorrow, I invite council members, tomorrow we have our Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative whole meeting. It is virtual. Councilmember Burnett or myself or Kim can get you the link if you want to sit in on part of it. You're happy to see what's going on and I'm very proud of the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative, what we've been able to do. But we're not stopping here. We've got a long way to go and working with the right people will get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And last but not least, we have the Center for Hope and the Regional Navigator Program.
Good afternoon Chair and the rest of the committee. My name is Jewel Copeland and I am the Anti-Trafficking and Exploitation Program Supervisor at Center for Hope. I am also the Human Trafficking Regional Navigator for Baltimore City. I'm going to share with you just briefly about what the Regional Navigator Program does and some of the amazing work we're doing at Center for Hope. The Regional Navigator Program was developed after Governor Hogan signed it into law, the Child Sex Trafficking Screening and Services Act of 2019. This law requires that law enforcement agents and local departments of social services who suspect to have reason to believe a child is a victim of sex trafficking, to notify a regional navigator in their jurisdiction or region to obtain needed services for that child. The regional navigator is able to assist with many things such as conducting screenings and providing or connecting youth with any of these following services, safety planning, emergency responses, basic living needs. This does not include housing, like us providing housing, but instead we would refer to housing services or housing resources. We are able to refer to trauma counseling and mental health services, drug and alcohol abuse treatments, legal services, victim advocacy and case management. The Regional Navigator Program is funded by the Child Sex Trafficking Screening and Services Act Regional Navigator Program Grant. Some of the services that are rendered here at Center for Hope that support the Regional Navigator Program include our victim and family advocacy, they support our caregivers and our family and youth with external services, which support with the resource provision. We provide case management services, which supports the youth with their overall goals towards safety and stability. This includes preliminary and ongoing assessments, evaluations of the youth's needs, coordinations to increase the youth's needs are met while they're being seen here at Center for Hope and we are prioritizing their safety. We provide basic living needs such as personal items, nutrition, immediate needs. So we have a closet that is full of clothing, toiletries, blankets that we are able to immediately provide our families. We recently got coats in for the winter. We have trauma counseling and mental health services as well at Center for Hope. These services are trauma-informed and responsive therapy and counseling services. They are mental health case management services and mental health crisis services as well. We also provide case coordinations, multidisciplinary team meetings and reviews, which are our MDT's. We have two different MDT's at the Center for Hope. We have our Child Trafficking MDT. We also have our Child Mal Treatment MDT. Our Child Trafficking MDT, where we have our cases reviewed every Monday and Wednesday at 11:45. This is a setting in which we advocate on behalf of the child and the victim and the various disciplines all come together in order to make sure that this youth's needs are met in the most efficient way. We also provide forensic interviews at the Center for Hope. This is when an interviewer talks with the child about their reported experiences. Forensic interviewers are licensed social workers and have specialized training in how to talk with children. The forensic interview is conducted one-on-one in a neutral and developmentally appropriate manner that is sensitive to the needs of the child. The interview allows for the child to explain what happened in their own words and members of the multidisciplinary team are all able to see and view this interview to ensure that the child is not traumatized over and over again, having to tell their story multiple times. We receive referrals to the Center for Hope and for Regional Navigator Services as well as support from the trafficking team in various manners. Some of the ways that we receive referrals are through our law enforcement partners and from our DSS partners. They will often reach out seeking support through our forensic interview and also support of the Child Trafficking MDT. We are able to provide specific human trafficking support with these MDT's that occur routinely as well as support for any CCM victims and exploitationist extortion victims as well. We also get cases referred in through our forensic interview process. We have a very great process that our FIs do, which is 24/7, they're available 24/7, so on weekends, holidays and overnight. At that time, law enforcement, DSS, anybody in need of a forensic interview could call the forensic interviewer themselves and they will make themselves available to make sure that that child is seen and able to be provided those services immediately and right away. Our FIs also accommodate our children and our victims as well by making special accommodations such as going out into the community to meet the child where they are, if necessary, to ensure their safety. This, I think, is such a very special accommodation that we are able to provide because as we know with children who are victims of trafficking, sometimes it's best to meet them where they're at, to make sure that they are most comfortable. We also receive cases referred to us through other regional navigators throughout the entire state of Maryland. So regional navigators are in different regions and by being able to communicate and have that partnership with other regional navigators, they learn about the services that we do have at Center for Hope and are able to refer to us if they know of any children in that area. Or again, it accommodates the family better for them to be seen and supported in Baltimore City. The CT MDT, in my opinion, is our greatest resource referral here at Center for Hope and that is because of the collaboration that occurs during the CT MDT. The CT MDT is strategically coordinated of various trafficking partners and representatives from all of the different state and government systems in Baltimore City, as well as representatives from various Baltimore City service providers for trafficking victims. These partners include Baltimore City State's Attorney's Office, Mercy Blue Dot, Department of Juvenile Services, Department of Social Services, Armenta and Turnaround. Due to the fostered relationships that have been developed in this MDT process, the Center for Hope has been contacted multiple times to discuss or talk through different cases and scenarios that have been brought to the attention of these partner agencies. And we've been able to bring these cases to the MDT to develop plans that best serve the victim. Again, we have two different MDT's at Center for Hope. First, the Child Mal Treatment, which includes the following attendees, Baltimore City Department of Social Services, Baltimore City Police Human Trafficking Unit, Baltimore City State Attorney's Office, Department of Juvenile Services, Turnaround, Armenta and Blue Dot. and Blue Dot. And those same partners attend our CT MDT if necessary. We also have other partners that attend if it is necessary or relevant, which includes Maryland State Police, Homeland Security, Federal Bureau of Investigations, external mental health partners, family caseworkers, Baltimore City Schools, social workers, and personnel, and any other organizations supporting the youth. Again, the goal of the CT MDT is to make sure that the youth's support circle and all of the services that they are involved in are in one area and are able to communicate freely, to make sure that we are all on one page, to get the youth the services as quickly and efficiently as possible, and to make sure that those youth's needs are being met. For example, Sheri has mentioned earlier that they were able to swiftly help the ten-year-old back from Maine, and we were brief, we were very quickly able to get this youth into our CT MDT process and make sure that her services and her family felt supported the entire Some of the new organizational changes and policies happening at Center for Hope. I was brought on as the supervisor for the program in April of this year and also as the Regional Navigator for Baltimore City. We have since hired a new case manager for our anti-trafficking team to support our victims as well. We have been able to conduct various trainings that educate the community and professionals on the basics and dynamics of human trafficking. This includes the awareness of the signs and misconceptions around trafficking, information on available resources for trafficking victims and survivors, and how to identify signs. I have presented on various statewide webinars, and we've also began to train the various schools in the city on some of the train, on some of the signs and misconceptions of trafficking, beginning with even our elementary schools. Some of our stats up to date. We have had one adult victim for a forensic interview in the year 2023, human trafficking. Forty-four for youth. As far as cases referred by BPD or DSS or school police, our data is not collected in that matter. Again, we work in a very collaborative way, so we are unable to specify exactly who was the point of referral, as many times they come to this MDT and talk about it together. As far as our Regional Navigator stats, we have had in the year 2023, 113 referrals from the Regional Navigator Program. We have served 113 victims from the Regional Navigator Program. And we have had 26 child trafficking MDT's. This includes initial MDT's and follow-ups to make sure that that youth received all services necessary.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody for bearing with us. There's a lot of, lot of presentations, and we're going to get into questions from the council member. I want to acknowledge Councilman Glover, who's joined us, and thank the commission for doing all the great work that you guys are doing, making sure that we're providing the services that are needed to hopefully get to the bottom of the issues that we're seeing here. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the sponsor. If you've got any questions that you'd like to ask or things you want to add.
Thank you. First, I just want to thank you all. As you can see, my colleagues, my colleagues in the council can see that there's a tremendous amount of work being done here and by folks who are very passionate about this work and helping victims of human trafficking. So I just want to thank you all for the work that you do and support, and your obviously continued participation in the collaboration is important. And so the first question I had was to the State's Attorney's Office, because one of the things that was lifted up, I think, a few times here is if, you know, folks are less likely, victims are less likely to cooperate if some of their other ancillary needs aren't met. Can you speak to how the victim advocate in the office works across support services to try and build cases or support cases where those other sort of barriers may be preventing a victim from wanting to participate if they're, you know, housing insecure or food insecure or other, other sort of issues that we know a lot of victims are impacted by?
Sure. Thank you again, Jesse Halverson, for the State's Attorney's Office. What I can do is say that while we're prepared to support human trafficking victims and keeping them on board in cases, you know, since I've been there in January, we have not had any extended cases where that was an issue. I will tell you in general, and it's most analogous to other kinds of serious sexual abuse crimes or, or other crimes where you have a vulnerable victim. We, you know, we do offer housing assistance to people, and one of the first questions our victim advocates ask is where are you living now? What is your housing situation? Do you need help? And we do have the ability through our Victim Witness Relocation Program to help people find other housing. It is not housing that anybody would love to move into, right? It is often a voucher program. This is less, I mean, the, the housing issue is less of an issue, obviously, for people with means. So for people without means, we, we try to match them up with programs where they can get some long-term housing. We have in the past referred to other agencies, nonprofits, before I got there in Jan, in January 2023, for various forms of short-term assistance. And this was actually a big issue at yesterday's meeting where I think the idea of the first three days, the first two weeks, the first 30 days are easier to cover, and then what comes after that. So again, if there, if, if somebody is a victim or a witness in an, in an ongoing case in the State's Attorney's Office, we have some resources to help connect them to a place to live or a way to move through our victim relocation specialists to find them some long-term housing. But specifically for human trafficking and specifically in a situation where people are trying to get out of the jurisdiction, you know, it's a challenge.
I would ask the same question to BPD, how your victim service supports help with supportive cases, building cases, or sustaining them as you're trying to get more evidence along the way?
So same thing. We do utilize our victim service advocates as some of that support, where, where the detectives may feel that they are having some challenges in connecting. And for one point, as you know, we did have our previous advocate who, we had a vacancy there, which we've now filled, which is, is good. So we are still trying to really expand that to see where the advocate can really fit in a lot of those places. But they do the same just as through our advocacy's, I mean, the victim services advocates for child abuse or our sex assault cases, even with our homicide and non-fatal shootings, where they will do a lot of that connection for, with the family or with those victims to see how they can support. So any services that, that is available to them, they'll apply for those applications, those grants, those services, not just from the city level, but also at the state level. So they, they help to walk them through that process.
And same with for fire. I know you touched this a little bit, but if you could just expound a little bit more on some of the referrals and support systems that are, the fire department is making referrals to, or just any sort of highlights, things that you want to highlight or lift up along the way?
I would say, obviously, our biggest and most direct referral is to get them to Blue Dot, to get them in 24/7. Deb's team's always amazing with anything that they can do. So that's the big takeaway for us. But we also work with other agencies to make sure we facilitate soft handoffs. And sometimes we're on the receiving end and not the forwarding on end. We got a call, one of the things I think I forgot to mention when we were doing my pre, my slideshow is that we got a call from Homeland Security at about 6:00, 6:30 one morning, one weekday morning, asking, concerned about a minor that they had located that had been kind of MI, and I don't know if it, I don't even, didn't get any details if it crossed over any other agencies. But they got word that, that this minor was in somewhere in Baltimore City, and they were going to reach out and try to connect with that person. And they were asking if the fire department would be, if transporting by an ambulance was appropriate, and certainly we, you know, made that happen. I made some phone calls to give people heads up that this might be coming through and facilitated it all the way through the chain. That would have been involved in the handoff. So Deb's team was ready, our team was ready, and EMS officer in the field was ready for it. Ended up not needing our services, but that's what, when Tom talks about the collaborative and the handoff, Deb always says it a warm handoff. That's what we work at. We make sure that we can connect with people. Another one that we had too was a case with, sometimes, I think what Jesse was talking about was they don't, we don't identify it right away. Sometimes we say that, it's pretty common that we, we figure out after the fact that we have maybe that was trafficking and we didn't identify it as such, maybe we didn't make it to Mercy, maybe we didn't even tell a receiving hospital that we thought it was trafficking. But then after the call, our folks talked to supervisors, and because everyone's had the training, they called me, I got a phone call, I got a text message over the weekend, last week or in the weekend before, saying, hey, this is, something's off, and how do we handle this? And what can I do? And I talked to the EMS officer through some questions, to do some more probing questions, things that normally a child would be able to answer, that this child wasn't. And there was just some concerns, I think it was in your district or Councilman Ramos. And, and basically, we followed through with saying, we're not sure if this is trafficking, but I was able to call the doctor at the hospital and make sure that the folks, somebody at that receiving facility was aware, made sure Deb's team was aware, and I'm not even sure where, how it manifested throughout, but everybody who might have been involved was aware. So that's what we talk about with the collaborative, and whether we pick up the phone 24/7, we can make those contacts to, to just kind of grease the wheel to make sure it's a smooth connection piece.
Thank you, colleagues. Councilmember Ramos?
Thank you, Councilman, and also thanks for your leadership on this issue. It's super important. We honestly wouldn't be where we are without you, so thanks for doing that. And thanks, all of you, for being so involved. You're obviously very committed to this work, and I'm really, really appreciative of all the time that, that you've been spending. I have two questions. One is, the sponsor already sort of touched on the, the housing piece with the State's Attorney's Office, but the others, some others have also talked about it. It sounds like that's still a major obstacle. Is that the case? I wanted to just let you know that I introduced a bill, and the Department of Housing and Community Development didn't wait for us to pass the bill. They went ahead and put a program together called the HOPE Program. And basically, what this is, is a, it has to be through referral, and it is rental assistance and security deposit for 12 months, and then it tapers down. And we originally designed it for when the, for MOED and for people entering, you know, the workforce to then get, you know, get organized and be able to get to work because it's also a major barrier to work. But it is designed also for these types of situations. So I'm happy to get you connected. This is one of the reasons why we passed the Affordable Housing Trust Fund many years ago, to be able to have flexibility to create these types of programs. So, and I would be interested to also just get a little bit more in terms of statistics as to the, the actual needs, because then that helps us advocate for more money, but also make sure that we are filling the need. Because, you know, now that program doesn't help with all the other services that are around. It's simply just rental assistance. The other services that are needed are critical. And so this obviously is going to take, which I, I'm hearing, I don't think anybody said the words, but I'm hearing that, you know, one of the things that has to happen is literally a case management approach. So that somebody's in, you know, you, you find them at the hospital, or you're finding them at schools or whatever, and then have to take, have to, once accepting services, then, you know, take them through. And so I, I think that this could be a, the, the HOPE Program I was just talking about could be a base, but then there's got to be all these other services around. So just wanted to make you aware of that if you weren't already aware. And if we could, when you get another chance, whether it's our next meeting or, or soon, just to get a little bit more specific as to the, the specific housing needs, like how many people that have come in, how many people said that they needed service, you know, housing, how many were able to get it, or is it just short-term? You know, those kinds of things would be able to be helpful.
Thank you so much for that. One of the things that the state does is we have a entire committee that focuses on housing issues, that I will absolutely invite you two to talk about this. I know that for me and a lot of our colleagues, housing is probably the number one issue that we face. It is abundant. I mean, people without the element of human trafficking face massive housing issues, but with that added element, it is increasingly more difficult to find stabilized, long-term housing, other than the short-term fixes where we're posting people up in hotel rooms or very short-term places to stay. And so I'll help coordinate with a lot of our collaborative members to get in touch with you on following up with that data, but I'll also invite you to our housing subcommittee meeting.
I would love that. Thank you very much, because I think that I will learn a lot also. And then the MOHS just announced their Flex Fund Program, and so to the extent that there's money available there, that's a good program. So I would absolutely love to work with you on this particular piece. My other question was, the, I think that it was mentioned earlier that, on the BPD side, I believe, that there were nine closed cases in 2023 and 22 closed cases in 2022. What does that mean? 24, excuse, well, right. So what is that, what does that actually mean? And it sounds like 2023 is almost over, but off to a slower start. But I just want to understand what that, what that means.
So that mean cases that we opened and investigated that are now closed. Sometimes what happens is there is no resolution, like some of the cases will remain open just until we get through some of those investigative processes or even get the case to the level that we can present for prosecution, or as you heard, as you heard Jesse Halverson say, where we can get to a point where it can be presented to grand jury, bring it to trial and then get conviction. So most of them, I think that is, is, is good to note, is that we do not have cases that is being declined from the State's Attorney's Office or sent back. But most of the time, once those cases are initiated and we are beginning, even in the very beginning of the investigative stages, State's Attorney's Office is with us every step of the way. So it helps us, you know, to strengthen the case, make sure that if there's any other investigative steps or means that we need to make sure that we are building stronger cases for prosecution, they are with us every step of the way.
So these stats are not necessarily convictions. These are just that they, you've done your investigation and they've moved to the next step, or they were closed because they were unfounded.
So unfounded is something that we try to stay away from.
Oh, okay.
Unless we absolutely can.
Okay, that was my word, not yours.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just want to make sure that I understood correctly.
Yes, so that's one of the things that we really try to stay away from. The, the goal is to make sure that we are doing the best job possible for our victims and for public safety. So just saying that, hey, sometimes we do have some cases that does come in, and eventually the victim will say, hey, listen, I did say this, this may not, or through some of those investigative means, we find that maybe that was not the, the complete totality of what the offense was. But to get to that point to say, hey, unfounded cases, that's something that we prefer to stay away from, because at the end of the day, justice is what we're trying to bring. So in those closed cases, I can, I can get maybe the breakdown for you to show what were convictions, what did we, what did we charge versus some of the other pieces in just closing the case?
Yeah, that'd be helpful. I just want to get a better understanding of what closed means and, because it sounds like it also, not necessarily that it's unfounded, again, my word, not yours, but that there might have been a referral to another service, you know, whatever that means. Because there was a lot of data that we heard today, and I, and I think that we probably want to get a few metrics that we're following moving forward in terms of the success of the work. And not necessarily just the success, because any, there could be any number of factors that determine whether or not there's more cases. So for instance, we could have a big spike one year, but that's because everybody knows how to report, you know? And so that doesn't mean that there's more of it, it just means that the reporting is better. So just to kind of seeing that data, and I would, I guess the collaborative's been working on what those would be. So, but I, I was just trying to figure out that what, what closed means.
Yes, and I think, I thought, the, the other piece is just making sure that we are doing at those educational outreaches, those pieces too, because we do recognize an educated community is an informed community that most certainly can always come back and do their piece too, because we, we know we see things, but we don't know if the thing we see is really that thing. But I think really walking through that piece with education to community as well is, is definitely helpful, which is what I was, I guess, expressing to Councilmember Burnett, is that when we even have a community where we do know some of our Burnett, is that when we even have a community where we do know some of our, that community in particular, you know, some of, some of the conversation is bring more of this heavier hand enforcement. But if we can get in and really have different engagement, we may find out something else that is really happening there, where they may be willing to, one, trust us enough, share with us that's happening, and even disclose, so that we can get in and do some of those deeper investigations. And not just say, hey, we're just sending enforcement, you know, operations there for that purpose.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you. I don't know if anybody else had an answer to that question?
Thank you, Councilmember Ramos. What I would say is that, you know, I suspect everybody in this room would look at a case where a minor or an adult was kidnapped and sexually assaulted, they would look at that, is there a trafficking component? So that case might be at the investigative level, looked at as human trafficking. But it is, it is a very serious crime on its own, and without the element that would make it a trafficking issue, it's still a kidnapping, sexual assault, you know, many first-degree felonies. So it may be that that would also be closed, I believe, and I don't speak for the police, but I work with them a lot, is that, that, that could have been a human trafficking investigation as part of a kidnapping investigation, and the HT or the human trafficking part's closed, but there's still a case. And so I can think of two cases that were pretty high-profile, where there was a kidnapping of a minor, one into Baltimore and one out of Baltimore, two separate cases. And I think from our perspective, neither one of them was trafficking, and I think, I think the police agreed with that. But they were kidnapping cases that you would look at to rule out or rule in trafficking. So I think that's another possible resolution with cases, is they could be closed from the police side or from our side with a different significant charge. And so part of being educated about human trafficking is knowing what it is, but also what it, what it isn't, for us, anyway.
Well, I think, I mean, you had mentioned it earlier, that you sort of have to look at whatever comes to you from all angles, to kind of figure out exactly what's going on. Because you don't want to miss a human traffic, a major human trafficking case, if that ends up being the case. But if it's not, then, you know, it makes sense to refer it. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much, and I look forward to the information. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Burnett?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Just to follow up on that. So in Baltimore County, there were around 10 or so prosecutions of human trafficking, on average annually, at least, when you look at some of the data. Can you all speak to, I guess, where, is it, where some of the issues, where the gaps are, I guess, in prosecutions in Baltimore City versus Baltimore County, when we, you know, we have some of the highest rates of trafficking? Is it, I guess, could you elaborate a little bit more on like, what goes into bringing a case forward for prosecution versus referring it out? Just help us understand the decision-making process within the agency.
Sure. And I always hesitate to speak about other counties' statistics, because I don't know what went into them. I do know that we are careful to look at individual cases, and this is a work in progress, in terms of what do you do when a community member calls 911 and says they're a man, or a person identifies as a man or woman on the corner, soliciting sex for money. And the, I would say that we're in the process of working with the victim advocacy community and our law enforcement partners in figuring out how to handle that. I can tell you that in other counties, they roll up and arrest those folks, and charge them with either self-trafficking, or they charge the Johns with trafficking. And so it could appear as a trafficking arrest and conviction, but it's really just a sex worker and the individual client. I don't know that they have, and that is something that we look at, but, but we are really deep in the weeds on how to address this in Baltimore City. Because having identified the sex workers as the victims of human trafficking, it is somewhat of a minefield how you approach this at the street level. And I would conjecture that those, what I would call sort of individual one-off cases, may help populate the data in other counties. And in our jurisdiction, and I do know our federal prosecutor partner is sitting behind me, they have several cases every year in this, in Baltimore City and in the Baltimore area, where they are prosecuting a multi-level human trafficking that occurs in our area, including Baltimore City. So while, again, we're investigating one right now, that I think will be a good case, where we have been able to go up the chain, as it were. But I don't, I'm, I think that's my answer, is that I think that some of these low-level things where you can charge someone with trafficking themselves, right? They're the victim and the perpetrator. You can prosecute the John as a trafficker. I think those low-level arrests are not something that we are, don't think it really solves the problem. And so it's just something that we are working on hard in the background.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, we're going to go over to public testimony. If there are folks who are here looking to testify in person, please step forward. We have two people signed up today. We have Mia Reid.
My name is Mia Reid.
Up before you begin, please press the button on the right-hand side. It'll light up the microphone, and now we can hear you.
Now you can hear me. Hi, hi. Thank everyone for being, you know, welcoming us here and being, being able to testify. I just wanted, I'm with Araminta, and we work mainly with the survivors, the younger survivors. And I basically just wanted to come to just give a story of one of my survivors that I'm currently working with, and how you all in this room, and your support and everything is going to help this young lady to be better and be able to live a life that we all like to live. So she's 10 years old, and she's been trafficked. And I know a lot of us have kids, and we have grandkids and everything. So when you think of a 10-year-old whose life has been taken away from her, and she no longer knows who to trust, how to trust, this young lady doesn't even want to go outside. She's forced to go to school because it's a school thing, you know? She has to get her education. I'm sorry, it's tears for, it's a little. But we just, I just met with this young lady the other day, and she's going through survivor remorse. And I don't know if you know what that means, but that means that this young lady is blaming herself for a situation that she had no control over. She now is, is wanting to actually protect the people that did it to her. She knows that there was more than one person, but she also wants to know what we are doing as, you know, as a community, to make sure that we don't just leave out somebody that was involved. She knows that they picked up the person that actually assaulted her, but she knows that there were more people. So my thing is, we need to work harder and work together to not only convict, help the survivors. The survivors are suffering really big. They are really in need of the support. And with Araminta, we are able to go, from the time we get the referral, we help go through to investigation, we go through, all the way through to the prosecution and beyond. We work with these young ladies to make sure that they are able to live a life that's worth living. And I just wanted to be able to just share her story, because she doesn't know which way to go now. Her parents are nervous, they don't know if the traffickers, they know where they live, we know that much. So now we all using the resources that we have within this room to make sure that they are safe and that they get the proper care that they need. So I'm just asking, you know, everybody to continue to work collaborative, to know that Araminta is here to help fill in the gap wherever the gap needs to be filled in. We do, we're on the grounds. I'm out here on the weekends, during the week, whatever. Phone call away is what I tell my, my survivors. I'm a phone call away. So pretty much is, you know, I just want you to know that we're available, we're here, and we support your services. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reid. Next up, we've got Jackie Schroder. And as you come up, please press the button on the right, it'll turn on the microphone. You can feel free to-
Is that good?
Turn it down.
Can you hear me now?
That's better, yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
My name's Jackie Schroder. I'm the Director of the Elder Abuse Awareness Program at HANA. The program was formerly known as SAFE, Stop Abuse of Elders. I've personally directly served nearly 900 community-dwelling older adults who were victims of different forms of elder abuse. I also just completed serving as project coordinator for a five-year collaborative grant from the Department of Justice Office on Violence Against Women to End Abuse in Later Life solely focused in Baltimore City. Our grant partners were the Police Department, State's Attorney's Office, Adult Protective Services, the Health Department Aging and Care Services, both District and Circuit Courts, and HANA. The Office of the Attorney General Medicaid Fraud and Elder Abuse Units, and the Office of Healthcare Quality as well as 211 were avid partners. The grant actually just ended September 30th. I'm here today to bring your awareness to very devastating news, and to open all of ourselves to putting on elder abuse lenses whenever you're working cases where younger people are concerned, so that you begin to look around to find, even hunt for, the older adults who are around and whose situations may be hidden. We're discovering older adults are being trafficked for their social security benefits, veterans' benefits, labor, sex, yes, sex, and possibly body parts. One example of how it happens is they're being discharged from hospitals to a licensed home where a bed is left open. The following morning, they're moved to a bed or basement in an unlicensed address, or they're sold to a different owner. Not only is this a horrifying reality, but it's causing difficulties for the Baltimore City ombudsman, or state ombudsman, to do their job of advocating for these people. And two weeks ago, a colleague from the Maryland Department of Health stated to me that she cannot find her participants. In this city, we have approximately 500 licensed assisted living homes. We don't know how many unlicensed we have, but we do know that other jurisdictions are sending people to Baltimore City because the people cannot afford care in their own jurisdictions. A check for $775 a month won't get too far. The owner becomes the older adult's representative payee for their benefits, and refuses to give any of the money to the person whose money it belongs to. This is a situation involving multiple crimes. It's time for this moral and human rights violation to be addressed. And I want to thank you, Councilmember Burnett. Immediately after I spoke with you about this, you rapidly took action to learn about the problem, and you're taking action now. I want to thank all of you very much for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you, Ms. Schroder. If there's, if there's anyone else here who would like to testify, please step forward. If you are joining us virtually and would like to testify, please use the raise hand function, and we will unmute you. Seems no one wants to testify, so we're going to close testimony, open up to the sponsor again as we close out. Just appreciating all the hard work you're doing on this.
Thank you. And thank you all again. As you all have heard, again, there's a tremendous amount of work being done. There's still a tremendous amount of work to do here in Baltimore City. But this is definitely one of the most proud projects or collaboratives that I've been a part of over the last six years, and look forward to continuing our work together. But I'm just perpetually amazed that everything that's happening to support folks in Baltimore City. And, you know, when we first came into the idea of the collaborative, it was very clear that amazing work was being done, it just wasn't being coordinated in this way. And I think that's what we can be most proud of, is that this continued effort in space and information sharing and resource sharing and building capacity in Baltimore has been something that is amazing to see and watching that blossom. I did want to invite my colleagues. One of the things that we do for our own camaraderie is the, and to support the Special Olympics, is the polar bear plunge. So I do want to invite you guys to join me. And, you know, because, I mean, this is a very, it's an issue that's both all near and dear to our heart, but also one that I think, you know, it can weigh a lot on you. And so, being able to just share that space together, you know, break bread, jump in some really nice warm water in January, is, you know, for us, the ability to just to show that, that little bit of discomfort. But, you know, enjoying our time together and the work that we do together every year. So that's how we kind of celebrate. It's a weird space, the way to kind of celebrate the work that we do. But all are welcome to do that with us. So I just wanted to extend the invite as well. And again, if anyone in the room wants to be a part of the collaborative, to join our meetings, just reach out to Kimberly Sauer for my team and get you added to the listserv. And yeah, that's all we have for today, and we will continue this discussion. So looking forward to future updates.
Yeah, I'll say for those that, and for those that actually like warm water, you can always donate to the cause. With that, I want to thank you guys. This hearing is in recess.